Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. At this time, I call to order this meeting and declare a quorum. If you would all please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence led by our student board member, Kevin Baume.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce some guests, or at least one guest this evening. I think the second person I was going to introduce hasn't arrived yet. We have with us this evening Gideon Williams, who is a student in the IB Magnet Program at Northern Middle School. Gideon is here working on his communication badge through the Eagle Scouts. So, welcome, Gideon. It's nice to have you with us. We'll move to approval of the agenda for this evening. Is there a motion?
There are no.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Any discussion of the agenda? Okay, sing down all those in favor. Okay, we have six affirmative votes and the student member concurs. Motion carries. This time, we'll have the approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I have five motions for this evening. I'll start with the first motion for the approval of the public hearing transcript minutes dated Tuesday, May 25, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any additions or corrections? I don't guess that would be appropriate since it's a transcript. So, we'll move to the vote. We're moving to approve the public or to, is it to approve or to adopt?
To approve a public hearing transcript.
Okay, so we're approving the transcript of the public hearing held on May 25, 2021. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Student member concurs. Motion carries.
Our second motion is for the approval of the public hearing transcript minutes dated Wednesday, May 26, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. We'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the transcript of the public hearing held on May 26, 2021. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes and the student member concurs.
The third motion is for the approval of the work session minutes dated Tuesday, June 1, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the work session minutes of June 1, 2021? If there are none, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Student member concurs.
On the fourth motion, I ask for approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, June 1, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session? We'll move to the vote. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Motion carries.
My fifth motion is for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, June 1, 2021.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of June 1, 2021? All those in favor of approval? We have six affirmative votes and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Gessford. At this time, I have an announcement that I would like to make. This is a statement regarding the board's charge to review and make recommendations for school facilities with the current or projected student enrollment of less than 60% state-rated capacity. Washington County Public Schools previously advertised that the Board of Education anticipated taking a vote at this evening's meeting regarding the superintendent's recommendations that resulted from the board's charge to the Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee to review schools with current or projected student enrollment with less than 60% state-rated capacity. The recommendations endorsed consolidating Hancock High School into Clear Spring High School, combining Hancock Elementary and Middle Schools, and closing Cascade Elementary School. Excuse me. At the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting on Tuesday, June 1, a majority of the board voted to stop the school closure consideration process. This was not a scheduled vote or discussion. Rather, the board exercised its ability to amend the agenda at the beginning of the public meeting to include this additional action item. The vote at the June 1 meeting ends the matter at hand, and the school closures that were proposed in these recommendations will not happen. The public may view video of the board's discussion and vote on the WCPS YouTube channel The vote is also recorded in the June 1 meeting minutes that the board just approved. On behalf of the Board of Education, I would like to thank the volunteers of the Facilities and Enrollment Advisory Committee and our Superintendent, Dr. Michael, for their responses to the board's charge in this matter. We also thank our community stakeholders for their feedback and engagement throughout the process. Thank you. At this time, we'll have public comment. I have no one on the list of those who would have signed up in advance. Is there anyone out there who would like to make public comment? Then we'll move to the superintendent's report at this time.
Okay. To start with, we want to recognize our ESP of the Year finalist for 2021. I'm going to call Mr. Tim Haynes to come forward. He's going to share a video with the board, share some of the people that shares all the people that nominated our finalists. We have a number of the finalists with us tonight. After the video, I'm going to ask Mr. Haynes to introduce each one of them and have them come forward and stand in front of the dais. We're almost back to normal. When we get the group all up here, I'd like to invite the board members to stand where they are here at the dais. Maybe we'll crowd in a little bit, and Aaron will take a nice picture here where we'll post. So, with that, Mr. Haynes, if you'd introduce the topic and our video, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Michael. Just a little less than a week ago, we were honored to have our second annual ESP of the Year award ceremony right here in the CES auditorium. Out of 189 finalists, we selected five finalists that are phenomenal representations of all the ESP staff here at Washington County Public Schools. With that being said, at this time, I would like to introduce five videos that were played during that ceremony. They're actually the nominator of each of the finalists, introducing them, and wishing them good luck prior to the ceremony.
Scott is such a dedicated employee at WCPS. He helps out whenever he's asked. He'll offer his help when he knows help is needed. He's got a great attitude. He's always got a smile on his face. Scott's responsible for picking up mail at the schools. Most of the schools probably don't even see him. He's in and out before anyone else even gets there. He makes a huge impact on the system. If we didn't have someone who is as dedicated as he is to that job, a lot of those mailings wouldn't go out on time and wouldn't get to you on time. He's just an all-around great, great person, you know, very dedicated employee. So, from all of us here at CES, Scott, we wish you good luck as a finalist for WCPS ESP of the Year, and we hope you win.
Well, I've been on the bus with Kristy for eight years now. She's one that every kid that gets on the bus, she gives a smile and a good morning She does things for them on special holidays and their birthdays and all. She sincerely loves and adores all the kids. And then one of the big things is she gets to know the parents. She makes sure she greets them when they bring their children to the bus. She just really feels like she's part of their family. So, I just want to wish Kristy the best of luck. She just does an outstanding job, and I just felt she needed recognition for that.
Ms. Nevicki is just really incredible. I mean, I've worked with her for 15 years. She truly puts her all into her job. She is never not busy. She just has this great ability to form relationships with the kids. Diane is very organized. She is very well-versed with the subjects that she helps the kids with. I mean, she'll go over the assignments ahead of time. She works on, you know, her own learning so that she can help the students in class. I nominated Diane because she really has earned this, and I truly feel honored to work with her, and all of us at North are rooting for her.
I nominated Deb Plume for this because I think it's a great opportunity to recognize not only how much she's meant to us here at Western Heights Middle School during this crazy year that we've had, but also to honor the work that she's done in her entire career here in Washington County Public Schools as she's set to retire as of June 30. Deb is a grizzly through and through. She's a blue that helps to keep all things Western Heights together. She's dependable. She's trustworthy. She's a great listening ear. I can always count on Deb to make decisions in the best interest of students. She's very supportive of her staff as well. And having someone like Deb on team is always what you can look for. Deb, on behalf of Western Heights Middle School, we wish you nothing but the best and great luck here as a finalist for this wonderful honor. Crystal is one who never stops giving for our students or our staff, whether it be food or just help. You'll never know where you'll find her in the cafeteria because she's always helping her fellow colleagues out. She leads by example. She jumps right in the trench with them. It's not uncommon to see her cleaning the cafeteria tables to help out the custodians. And then when it comes to our students, no student ever leaves hungry. She's always championing for them. If they need some type of support or help, she'll do it no matter what the time, between classes, a student who comes in late that didn't get a chance to get their meal. She will find a way to make sure that that student is fed and taken care of. She takes care of everyone. She cares about everyone. She's truly an ESP of the Year. From the community and staff at Dunsborough High, Crystal, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for all you do for all of us.
At this time, I would like to invite Scott Canfield to the front of the dais. Scott is a mailroom clerk here at CES, and he has been with us for six years. Kristy Clements, oh, I'm sorry, and Scott was also our Maintenance and Operations Employee of the Year as well. Kristy Clements, who was our Transportation Employee of the Year, could not be here this evening. She has 15 years of service with WCPS and is a special education bus driver with the system. Diane Nevicki, if you could step forward, please. She's a paraprofessional at North High, and she has 15 years of service and was our Student Support Employee of the Year. Deb Plume, who hopefully you know, is our 2021 ESP of the Year and also the Administrative Support Employee of the Year. Deb has 35 years of service with WCPS and will be retiring as of June 30. Also not with us tonight is Crystal Tobery, who was the Food and Nutrition Services Employee of the Year, and she has five years of service with you. So, if we could give them all one more round of applause.
All right, your board members, if you'd push your chairs back. You all stay put and just kind of push in here towards the left a little bit.
Want it back. Good direction following.
It's our first opportunity to have people in person and to celebrate this April 13th, so congratulations, everybody.
Did I do that right? Did I go the right way?
All right, Diane, congratulations.
Mrs. Plume, happy retirement.
Just a few announcements. Our kickoff to summer school was this week on Monday. Over the entire summer, we anticipate that we have about 10,000 enrollees in summer school. Some students are taking two and three and four different, two and three-week sessions, so that doesn't represent 10,000 different children, although we do anticipate that we will have thousands of children over what we traditionally have. Normally, we have about 1,000 children in summer school. I'm hoping the number's four or 5,000 different children, maybe more than that. We're still encouraging parents to enroll their child. If they didn't get started this week, if they see we have a camp atmosphere more for elementary and some middle schools, as well as a lot of tutoring and help and support, and traditionally where people can earn credits in high school. If you haven't become involved and you're interested in becoming involved in summer school, please contact your local school or check out our website, and we'll be sure that we get you enrolled. Our goal with summer school, our goal with all the work that we did this spring and the efforts we had while we were online, is that we return August 30 as if COVID never existed. Now, that's a big lift, but that's our goal. We're going to get back. We're going to get back up and get running and back to normal and have our students progress as they should each year moving forward. I do want to make the public aware, we still have our summer meal sites available. Credit to the Food and Nutrition Service Team that immediately got summer meals started the day after school students left. The very next day, the summer meal sites were up and available to students. There are 18 locations across the county. Meals are available Monday through Thursday, and on Thursday, we offer a double meal lunch that covers Thursday and Friday. Any child under the age of 18 is eligible to participate. You don't have to be free and reduced eligible. You don't even have to be enrolled in Washington County Public Schools. You don't even have to be of school age to receive meals at our meal sites. So, we encourage parents to come out, check out the website for those 18 locations. I do want to acknowledge that today, the governor had a press conference where he made an announcement as of July 1. He's basically from the governor's chair, you know, kind of forgetting COVID at this point. As far as I understand, there'll be no restrictions, no executive order, no emergency order as of July 1. So, we've been adjusting our plan. Much of the guidance from the Health Department and the CDC has been guidance and recommendations. Obviously, the governor's orders have been law. In my mind, they are at least, and that's what we've been following. So, with his announcement of basically things returning to normal on July 1, we'll be sending out a smore next week with details to staff and to students, but we anticipate that we'll return to normal as of July 1. I think we'll continue and encourage people to continue to wipe down surfaces, use hand sanitizer, wash your hands well. We've seen the fruits of positive health regardless of the pandemic as a result of the practices that we've had. Very limited cold, normal flu, all those types of things. So, I think all of us can remain healthy by just practicing those safe protocols. So, we'll have more information about that coming out on July 1, but I think at this point, you can anticipate you can throw the mask away as of July 1 in our schools. Right now, we do require that all staff and students wear masks during summer school until they get that notice coming out next week in the smore. And again, the governor's order doesn't take, or the governor's lack of orders doesn't take effect until July 1. And a smore will come out next week and have all that in writing. I do want to wish good luck to our playoff contenders. I've had a lot of opportunities over the last week and a half here to try to get to as many games as possible. I know we have a couple of games today that I was not able to attend. They're down the road. I think tomorrow night, we have CACAC Awards. I won't be able to make it to a game. I know that's in Bel Air, I believe. But good luck to all of our baseball, one baseball team's still in it, a couple softball teams still in it, Smithburg Cross is still in it. We have someone advancing from tennis and track, any number of track athletes that are advancing to state finals, and some of the other groups are moving up through quarterfinals and semifinals. So, good luck to all of our athletes. We wish them good luck as they finish out the year here for us of the 2021 school year. And to everybody that's not attending summer school, or if you are attending summer school, I hope you have a great summer, whether you're a staff or students. Enjoy, take some time to relax. I can't encourage you enough, you know, kind of my thing is read, read, and read. And whether you're a staff member or a student, I just encourage you, take some time to read this summer, read something for pleasure, enjoyment. It helps expand your mind. It's a great opportunity to improve your educational skill set as we move forward. So, with that, Mrs. Williams, I think that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move to new business. Our first item of new business is the consideration of a contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2021-2022 school year, and a memo of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County ESPs regarding the recruitment and retention challenges in light of the COVID-19 pandemic during fiscal year 2022. We have with us Ms. Anne Marie Hines, who is the WC ESP president, and Terry Baker, Director of Human Resources. Good evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. This evening, staff requests your approval of the proposed agreements between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel.
Ms. Hines, do you have any comments that you would like to make?
I just would like to thank the board and the WCPS negotiations team for the collaboration. We appreciate the recognition of our very dedicated ESPs, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2021-2022 school year and a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel regarding the recruitment and retention challenges in the light of COVID-19 pandemic during FY22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Mrs. Hines, any additional comments?
No.
No. It's a pleasure having you here, and we're so happy that we were able to bring negotiations to such a nice close.
Yes, I agree.
So, thank you. Our next item under consideration is a contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association for the 2021-2022 school year and a memo of understanding between the WCBOE and the WCTA regarding additional compensation for in-person work during COVID-19 in fiscal year 21, and recruitment and retention challenges in light of the COVID-19 pandemic during fiscal year 2022. We have with us Mr. Neil Becker, President of the WCTA, and again, Mrs. Terry Baker, Director of Human Resources. Mrs. Baker.
And again, this evening, we ask for your approval of the proposed agreements before you between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association.
Thank you, Mrs. Baker. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the contract agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Teachers Association, Incorporated, for the 2021-2022 school year and memorandum of understandings between the WCBOE and the WCTA regarding additional compensation for in-person work during COVID-19 in FY21, and recruitment and retention challenges in light of the COVID-19 pandemic during FY22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zettmeyer. Any discussion? All those in favor of Mrs. Murray's motion as read? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Mr. Becker, I know we can always count on you for some comments, but do you have some comments that you'd like to make this evening?
Yes, thank you, President Williams, and board members, Superintendent Michael. We really do appreciate the opportunity to gather here today in recognition of the conclusion of this year's negotiations. This year exemplified the resilience of our young people and our staff and the challenges of concurrent learning, and the staff rose to the challenge. The agreement exemplifies the association's willingness to partner with WCPS even under the most difficult circumstances. Next year, we have the full agreement open for discussion, including salary and benefits, and I'm confident that we're entering in very good terms. And it's really incumbent upon the commissioners and the constituents who elect the commissioners to recognize that it would be much easier for Washington County Public Schools to run a school system and maintain its buildings when it has fully funded budgets. We won't have ESER grants and state grants to act as Band-Aids as they have this year. And, you know, going forward, it's incumbent upon the commissioners to fully fund Washington County Public Schools to help us catch up. The bargaining unit is behind two steps at this point, and, you know, there are some steep challenges for WCPS and WCTA to overcome when we're underfunded as we have been. And a point of personal privilege this evening, actually two, one is Kevin, you've been awesome as a student representative. Good luck in your future. I know you have someone here who'll probably announce a really cool thing that involves you here this evening, but congratulations, you've been an asset to the Board of Education. And another point of personal privilege is recognition of Eric Yekli, our chairperson. Eric is taking a step back from his role as chairperson starting next year, and the association is indebted to Eric and the work of his team this year as we have been in years past. So, thank you, President Williams, board members, and Superintendent Michael. Thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Our third item of new business is the consideration of an amendment to the agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Administrators and Supervisors. and the Washington County Association of Administrators and Supervisors for the 2021-2022 school year regarding the January 19, 2021 agreement for FY '22, and a memorandum of understandings between the Washington County Board of Education and the WCAS regarding additional compensation for in-person work during COVID-19 in FY '21, and recruitment and retention challenges in light of the COVID-19 pandemic during fiscal year 2022. Is there a motion? President Williams, I move-
If I could introduce the topic maybe just for a second. I'm going to fill in for Terry because it's A&amp;S. So we are seeking a motion on the, on the topic this evening of the A&amp;S contract and two MOUs. I would mention to the public, the contract for all three bargaining groups, the ESP group, the WCTA, and the A&amp;S Administrator Supervisor Group are all identical in compensation. Unfortunately, it's only an increase in COLA of 1.25%. Now, that'd be challenging enough if this was the only year we had such a COLA, but last year, we only had a 1% COLA. So it is disappointing. We were only able to offer 1.25% COLA, and that only came after making a number of adjustments to the budget that you have to consider tonight, as well as, as Mr. Becker mentioned, the availability of the state funding. The MOUs are providing one-time money to each of the bargaining groups. I would say it's appropriate compensation, but it should be on top of steps in COLAs that traditionally we've been able to give. So I certainly seek your approval for this this evening, and I'd offer an opportunity for Rachel Kainker-Patrick to make any comments, Mrs. Williams, and I just want to make her before or after the vote. I'll leave that up to you. But I think we do need to recognize the long-term money, recurring money, we call it. It was 1% last year, and it's only 1.25% for this upcoming year. And I know our employees deserve more than that. I'm hoping we're in a better position in the near future to do that. But I do seek your approval on the, on the items before you this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, and I apologize for jumping the gun and not allowing you to make that introduction.
I like to keep a meeting moving, my boy. I gotta keep up.
Again, my apologies. So is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve an amendment to the agreement between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Association of Administrators and Supervisors for the 2021-2022 school year regarding the January 19, 2021 agreement for FY '22, and memorandum of understandings between the WCBOE and the WCAS regarding additional compensation for in-person work during COVID-19 in FY '21, and recruitment and retention challenges in light of the COVID-19 pandemic during FY '22.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion is read by Mrs. Murray. We have six affirmative votes. Dr. Kainker-Patrick, do you have some comments that you'd like to offer?
I'd just like to say thank you, Dr. Michael. It was my first year engaging in this process and this role, and it was a very collaborative meeting, and we felt very heard in our discussions. You've always made yourself available, so we really appreciated that. Thank you to the board for working on this. I know it's been a difficult year in many ways for all of us, and so we appreciate the support. Lastly, I just want to thank my colleagues in A&amp;S. It's been a tough year, and they've, they've really risen to the challenge and beyond the challenge, and I just, it's been a pleasure and a, really, an honor to work with them and to represent them this year.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent agenda for this evening with Mr. Scott Bakel, Supervisor of Purchasing. Good evening, Mr. Bakel.
Good evening. Tonight, I have six items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items, and they are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
President, I move to approve the awards, renewals, and procurements for classroom furniture for WCPS to Duron Inc. at a cost of $494,422.78. Bus Fuel Depot improvements to Total Environmental Concepts, Inc. at a cost of $1,249,800. Blackboard subscription renewal to Blackboard, Inc. at a cost of $73,062.60. Zonar GPS System Software renewal to Zonar System at a cost of $70,129.32. Maintenance of Print Center Equipment at a four-year cost of $268,800. And Empower Maryland Small Business Direct Install to Willdan Lighting and Electric, Inc. at a cost of $78,097.30.
For the motion, is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Mr. Bakel? Any discussion?
Mrs. Williams, I have- I have a couple of questions from people here and there about some of the procurements tonight. Just like to mention our classroom furniture. We often replace our classroom furniture as we build our new schools. Well, for instance, we built Sharpsburg. We put all-new furniture in the brand-new school, and then we offer up the available furniture to help replace older, broken pieces of furniture throughout the system. Since it's been a couple of years, you know, and we anticipate it's going to be a couple more years, maybe many more years, until we open up additional schools where we can redeploy some of the furniture. This is one of our larger furniture requests. Other than that, when we purchase desk, solely desk. So we have about 35,000 chairs in the system, and in order to keep up with that, it takes an ongoing replacement of desks and chairs to maintain that. There's also a question about Blackboard. Blackboard is not only the platform that you could use for online learning, but what we use Blackboard for is really our ConnectVib messaging system to parents, texting, broadcasting text, those types of things. Is the purchase for Blackboard tonight? And the other question I had in the community was about GPS systems. Our GPS systems are on maintenance vehicles, so we can readily deploy the closest maintenance vehicle to an emergency situation. But more importantly, the largest part of the cost is in our transportation department, where the GPS is kind of connected to our camera system and tracks the location of the bus and coordinates that with the camera system, which has been very useful for a whole wide variety of reasons. So those are just some questions that came up that I just wanted to bring attention to. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Any other questions? Right then, we're voting to approve the awards and renewals and procurements as presented in the consent agenda. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Student member concurs. Thank you. Our next agenda item is consideration of a donation, a gift to Jonathan Hager Elementary School. Good evening, Dr. Palmer.
Good evening, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. I am requesting approval of a gift of $5,810.92 from Jonathan Hager's PTO to Jonathan Hager Elementary School to be used for student incentives, various school projects, such as additional playground equipment and staff recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Palmer. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve a donation in the amount of $5,810.92 to Jonathan Hager Elementary School from the Jonathan Hager Elementary PTO.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Dr. Palmer? Any discussion? Okay, here we go. We'll move to the vote. All those in favor of approval of the donation? Okay, we have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Student member concurs. Thank you, Dr. Palmer. And thank you to the Jonathan Hager Elementary PTO. Okay, our next item of new business is the consideration of the 2021 Educational Facilities Master Plan. You have Mr. Jeffrey Prue, Chief Operating Officer, Mr. Rob Rollins, Director of Facilities Planning and Development, and Mr. Chad Criswell, Senior Project Manager and Planning Supervisor. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. This evening, in front of you, we have the approval of the 2021 Educational Facilities Master Plan. You may recall, two weeks ago, we had a work session on this document. We're seeking your approval this evening, so it can be submitted to the state and be catalogued by July 1, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move for the approval of the 2021 Educational Facilities Master Plan.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion, any question? No? So we're ready to move to the vote. So we're voting to approve the 2021 Educational Facilities Master Plan. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Student member concurs.
Thank you.
It's great to see you guys back up there.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
And to see us.
All right, our next item under consideration, new business, is fiscal year 2021 budget adjustments with Mr. David Brandenburg, who is our Executive Director of Finance. Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, and members of the board, and Dr. Michael. From time to time, we do bring you some budget adjustments, and in reviewing things and trying to get, to close out the year, we see some things that need to be done. We have, as you approved at your recent meeting, the final cost of the portables at South High. We want to make an adjustment to that category so that we will not be over at the year end. We also need to cover some additional graduation and communication costs in mid-level administration, and we believe we'll be just a little bit short on our revenue. So we'd like to make those adjustments that are before you. These adjustments were discussed with the Finance Committee recently.
Thank you, Mr. Brandenburg. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed FY 2021 budget adjustments as presented.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions for Mr. Brandenburg? Any discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget adjustments as presented. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Student member concurs. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Hello. Mr. Prue, back with Mr. Brandenburg. Our next item of consideration is the board's education fiscal year 2022 general fund operating budget.
Board members, we're seeking your approval of the FY '22 general fund operating budget, the total amount of $298,62,787. The budget is balanced at this point. We needed to make substantial changes to the budget that the board saw in draft form. Probably the most significant changes were a result of some of the one-time grant funding that we received, and we've made some adjustments with that. So we moved some of our nursing positions to the Concentration of Poverty Grants. Because of the pre-K expansion grant, we're able to move some of our pre-K positions to the expansion grant for one year. They'll need to come back into the general fund next year because of grants for summer school for the next couple of years. We're moving summer school into the grant funding, which is helping us balance the budget, as well as some other miscellaneous items. We've started to pull some of the increases for the bus driver compensation, changes that the board approved several meetings ago into the budget, but there's still a substantial amount of those expenses that'll need to be pulled into future budget adjustments. We've adjusted the compensation package, unfortunately, down to the point where we can balance the budget at that 1.25% increase. The other savings to the board side, but also to the employee's side, is a 2% reduction in healthcare premiums, which is a plus for our employees. It also saves the board a little bit of money. We continue to have a substantial fund care balance or healthcare balance that seems to be maintaining itself without increase. So we're pleased with that, and we're going to, you know, share some of that savings right now back with the employees, as well as it helps save in our general fund. So hopefully, we're making a wise decision there. And we're seeking your approval tonight, Mr. Prue, Mr. Brandenburg. I think I saw Mr. Sissler walk in. Any and all of those people can answer your questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion to approve the Board of Education's FY 2022 general fund operating budget.
Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any questions? Okay, then we're ready to move to the vote to approve the board's fiscal year 2022 general fund operating budget. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. And the student member concurs. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Our final item under consideration for new business is the first reading of proposed changes to policy JEBD, Student Dismissal Precautions. And we have with us Mrs. Erssbrung, our Deputy Legal Counsel and the liaison to the Policy Committee. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. It's Dr. Michael and members of the board. The Policy Committee is conducting a comprehensive review through an equity lens of the student section of the Board of Education's policy manual. The committee conducted a review of policy JEBD, Student Dismissal Precautions, at its work sessions on April 27, May 25, and June 8. Currently, the policy does not specify that requests for early dismissal must be in writing, and generally allows a student's parent or legal guardian to make a telephone request for an early dismissal. The Policy Committee is proposing changes to the policy that will require requests for early dismissal to be in writing and limits telephone requests to only limited or emergency circumstances. This brings the policy in line with the current practice. The change also clarifies that the requirement for a written request for early dismissal applies to school-sponsored activities taking place off of school property for which a student leaves school prior to the end of the regular school day, for example, an athletic event. The Policy Committee is requesting the Board of Education's approval of the first reading of the proposed changes to policy JEBD. The Policy Committee members and I are available to respond to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Erssbrung. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JEBD, entitled Student Dismissal Precautions.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. Is there a second? Second. Questions for Mrs. Erssbrung or the committee members? Mr. Pickford, would you like to speak to this?
Sure. I think the, the biggest thing that struck me about this policy was the last time it was revised was 1983, so it was due for an update. And I was, would like to thank Mr. Stauffer for his view as, as somebody who was, has a lot of experience in athletics in the county. He, he talked us through many of these changes along with Mr. Erssbrung. So the main thing for me is that we've really clarified the policy to be the procedures that have been working very well in the county, and we also just updated the language to make sure that the appropriate people have permission to either release students at the appropriate time, and whether it be a principal's designee or a superintendent's designee, as well as proper identification of parents or legal guardians.
Any questions, board members? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the first reading of proposed changes to policy JEBD, entitled Student Dismissal Precautions. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes. Motion carries. Student member concurs. Thank you, Mrs. Erssbrung. So that concludes our new business. We'll move to personnel actions. Good evening, Dr. Pew.
Good evening. As discussed earlier in closed session today, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I would ask for your approval for today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the personnel actions that were discussed earlier in closed session.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Dr. Zentmeyer. Any discussion? Any questions for Dr. Pew? Then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve personnel actions as discussed in closed session. All those in favor? Six affirmative votes. Motion carries.
President Williams, I have a second request to meet the timeline required by the education article, the timeline of June 30, 2021. We're seeking your approval-
We're seeking your approval of an appointment of an Acting Implementation Coordinator to support the KIRWIN legislation that passed last year. This is all pending the Board of County Commissioners' joint appointment as well.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the Board's recommendation to appoint Dr. Gary Willow as the Acting KIRWIN Implementation Coordinator pending the Washington County Board of County Commissioners' appointment.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions, any discussion? Then we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve the appointment of Dr. Willow. All those in favor? Okay, we have six affirmative votes.
And Mrs. Williams, we'll contact the county administrator. We'll let them know that the Board's wishes to approve Dr. Willow as our Acting Coordinator, Implementation Coordinator, Dr. Willow still continues his current duties. This is just an extra assignment in the meantime. And so we get a little bit more information about exactly what the state's expecting from this position, so we're hopeful that the county commissioners will grant this approval in order to meet the deadline in June 30th, but we'll be in contact with the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Okay, that concludes new business and Personnel Actions. We'll move to reports to the Board, and we'll begin with Board Member Committee Reports. Dr. Zetmyer, do you have anything to report?
Oh, my goodness. See, and I met yesterday, and if I reported everything we talked about, we'd be here for another three hours. So I can say that Dr. Willow and his team have everything under control. Tech high renovations are on track and include more opportunities to help students graduate with a plan. Cody Pine, who is our Supervisor of Career Tech, reported on the new programs of the 52 program areas that we have, and that have been backward mapped from certification and degree to facilitate employment. The opportunities are outstanding. That's a big wow. ABLE, our Academy of Blended Learning, our virtual school, is staffed 260 K-12 students have already been enrolled. A record number of students are attending our summer school and camps as well, and a record number of teachers are taking part in professional development and curriculum writing, which is a triple wow. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled here Monday, July 12th, at 2:30. Thank you.
Thank you. For someone's committee? Mr. Gaster?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Yes, we met yesterday down at Boonsboro High School. We were able to take a tour of the new auditorium. I'd like to thank the staff that welcomed us down there yesterday, and that project is gonna be fabulous once that is done. So a gem for Boonsboro, that's for sure. There'll be more of a detailed report at the next meeting.
Okay, Mr. Evans isn't here, so we'll dispense with Finance Committee Report. Human Resources, Mrs. Murray?
Human Resources met on Tuesday, June 8th, and at that meeting, Joni Burkhart gave us an update on the new TIA, which stands for Teacher Induction Academy. It was formerly called New Teacher Academy, but since a lot of the teachers are coming to us with experience, they're calling it Teacher Induction Academy, and they have so many exciting changes for this year. I can't wait until she can give us an update to everybody. I didn't write them all down, but she was very enthusiastic, as she always is, and so I'm really looking forward to that. Our next meeting will be September 14th at 4:00 p.m. here at the CES.
Thank you very much. Policy Review and Development Committee, Mr. Pickford.
The Policy Committee met on June 8th. Besides the student dismissal policy that we approved for first read, we also discussed changes to policies regarding the student member of the Board and permission to attend out-of-home school attendance areas. A Policy Committee will meet again August 10th at 1:30 p.m.
Thank you. Mr. Bucko? I don't think you have anything for student government, do you?
I'll just share a quick update. The Washington Association of Student Councils will hold its elections in the fall, and I just wanna take time, a personal privilege, to thank our outgoing President Gabrielle Ryder, who's in the audience for attending here. And then we also have our incoming student member of the Board of Education, Tanish Gupta, too.
Welcome. Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Bucko.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to miscellaneous business, Future Agenda Items. You have a Future Agenda Items list. Talking about the career ladder at our only July meeting, which if you haven't noted on your calendar, it's July 13th. And the only other Future Agenda Item is the Summer School Report for this year, and that's coming up in October, at our first meeting in October. If you have suggestions for an item for the agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. That would be appreciated. This time, we'll move to Board Member Comments. Mrs. Murray, would you like to begin?
Well, I'd like to congratulate Kevin for his appointment to the State Board of Education. We're so proud of you. You're gonna do a great job. We're gonna miss you, but I know you're gonna do great things. The other thing I want to talk about is the summer reading program at the library. I saw it at the library, I was there the other day getting books, and my daughter said, "Mom, you really need to join this. You read so much." Join, you know, you get prizes. So I did, and it's so much fun. I encourage everybody out there, whether you're an adult, kid, in-between, join the summer reading program. It's fun, you get prizes, and you learn a lot by reading. So spend your summer reading some books.
Mr. Pickford?
I do wanna, I wanna give my hearty congratulations to Kevin. I'm thrilled because I know how well you served us, even virtually. We realized this evening that he's never actually been on the dais, so this is his first time on the dais and his last time. Though you have an honorary seat here anytime. And just how exciting, I'm really, I'm really looking forward to hearing the many stories that you have, and they don't, they don't know what's about to come their way because you always have asked excellent questions, you do your homework, and you really do speak for students, and Maryland will be well represented as well as Washington County. I'm thrilled that we came to the agreements this evening, and again, as Mr. Becker said, the one thing that concerns me is that we are sort of using federal funds to, as a Band-Aid because we continue to not get adequate funding from our commissioners, even though we go every year and tell them that essentially we're at a point where if they don't fully fund the budget, we won't be able to afford raises, and they never quite believe us. And then somehow, we find a way to pay for, we didn't last year, this year we are not really giving them a raise, but giving them a bonus. So that's, you know, I do wanna commend our superintendent for the budget agreements, and I appreciate the fact that even some of the budget transfers that we had to make, that you actually have an exit plan because at some point, the funds from the federal government, the COVID funds, will run out, and we need to know how we're gonna pay for that. And so we're already thinking years ahead to when that happens. And I'm just thrilled to see everybody with no masks. I'd forgotten what some of your mouths had looked like, so it's wonderful to have no masks, and I'm thrilled for the announcement from the governor that allows us to also lift the mask mandate after July 1st. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. Mr. Stauffer?
Again, I want to congratulate the ESP finalist and for their dedicated service to Washington County. I want to thank the staff, the students, the parents, and everyone who managed to survive this year. It's been a tough year, and let's hope we never have another year like this until I'm off the Board of Education. And you can have all we want. I want to again commend Kevin for being appointed as the student member to the State Board of Education. He told me that he plans to run for governor in about 15, 20 years. And I want to thank the employee groups for their cooperation in bringing negotiations to a timely close this year. And I want to emphasize also, I think it's been said several times tonight, but the money that we're giving to the employee groups is not because we're so greatly funded by the county commissioners. It's because of the ESAR money from the CARES program and other federal money that we're allowed to give bonuses. Unfortunately, those bonuses don't count towards retirement benefits and this type of thing, and I hope-
They don't build one upon another. That's really the most challenging part of that, of it being non-recurring, is the money doesn't build on each other, and that just puts us further behind over time.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Gaster?
Thank you, Ms. Williams. At the last board meeting, I made a motion to amend the agenda to add one vote to end the charge this board received to review the recommendations to close schools with less than 60% rated capacity. The board voted to keep Hancock High and Middle and Cascade Schools open. With the vote over, I asked, now that the work begins, to find programming and new ways to support these and other schools with lower populations. I was once told by a senior staff member that they had ideas on how to add more programs to Hancock. I will be waiting to see this team's work to find a program that will help make these schools successful. One program that my fellow board member brought up was an ROTC program from Hancock. I hope that this will be thoroughly reviewed by our superintendent and staff. I hope that this past four months' process was an eye-opener to the superintendent and our leadership team of Washington County Public Schools, and that the parents and community businesspeople, local elected town officials, parents and students, along with the community in whole, have spoken and want to work together for a change. As Board Member Dr. Zetmyer said, we have a room full of highly educated, highly intelligent employees sitting here with us and in this whole building. I would also add, we have seven board members with various abilities to brainstorm and find solutions. We have a superintendent that has dedicated his whole life to education and making our community a better place. We have the ability to fix this. We have to work to do it. I will continue to meet with parents, community leaders, and businesspeople to find ways to help those two communities and other communities that find their schools in the same situation, as long, as in along with my other board members. But there has to be continued work and communication by parents on what they and their children need. We just can't have a take-it-or-leave-it approach from the Washington County Public Schools when it comes to academic programs. Not all children are the same and should have more opportunities other than college if they choose. We must be forward thinkers and move for the betterment of Cascade Hancock Middle High School, along with their other schools. At the last board meeting, because time restraints and graduations were there, I did not get to say a couple of thank yous. Dr. Michael is a wonderful, caring person. I see him as someone who is dedicated, and he has dedicated his life to the betterment and enrichment of every student in Washington County, and I mean every student. As a superintendent, he has been doing what he is, he is doing what he is supposed to do. He has been, he has been asked to make very hard decisions in the most difficult times, and I can't imagine ever being in his shoes and what it was like. With those decisions, he only wanted the best for each child and for the safety of the students, staff, and the community. He had to abide by rules and laws, some I'm sure he agreed with, and some he probably didn't. But we understand and we approve, I approve, of the way he handled it. I would hope that if you see him out over the next few months, that you thank him for the many sleepless nights, the long, long days that he put in worrying how to make sure no student fell so far back that it would be hopeless. The many classrooms he went to to show his team, his employees, that he was right there beside them the whole time through this pandemic. He took many hits from parents and staff through emails, but he was there for each one, and I can't say enough about your dedication. I also would like to thank his wife for keeping him going the whole time. We can only imagine the support he needed at home to keep strong and healthy and to be where he is today. It had to be because of a strong woman beside him. He told us many times how you supported him through this pandemic, so thank you, Mrs. Michael. Now to my end-of-year thanks, to our frontline workers, the bus drivers and bus aides, who had so many setbacks, restarts, cleaning, sanitizing, just to get our students to school. You are thanked for your dedication. And as a shout-out to the bus maintenance department, who also had to jump in and drive buses when they were needed. Thank you. You are heroes. To our lunch cafe, our lunch and cafe staff, you never had an opportunity to rest right through the pandemic, including summer months last year, and then right into the modified year of make-up of ups and downs. You supported our food program and made sure families had nutrition, nourishment for their children. To my wife who works at Ruth Ann Monroe in the cafeteria, I love you and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaster.
Heroes, I'm sorry, I'm gonna finish. Heroes to us.
Oh.
I'm sorry. I got a couple more. This is the end of year. Our custodian staff, who worked, shuffled, wiped, cleaned, moved more, and prepared our students and supported our staff. You can't imagine what school system would look like without your dedication. I am sure you didn't feel like coming to work many days, but you did. Heroes to us. To teachers, parapros, lead staff, administrators, and to all of our secretary, words can't begin to be spoken on how well you performed during this unforgettable time in teaching. The dedication to your students, to the teaching profession, will never, ever be forgotten. Heroes to us. And finally, I thank my fellow board members for working as a team. You rock. Thank you very much, and congratulations to Kevin, to the highest honors. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Gaster. Dr. Zetmyer?
Oh, no. It's on you. I'm glad I went before you. Father's Day was founded and first celebrated in Spokane, Washington, June 19th, 1910. Sonora Smart Dodd was the one who founded it. Her father, the Civil War veteran, William Jackson Smart, was a single parent who took over after his wife died, raising Sonora and her five brothers. That in itself probably was a challenge. The event started at court that went from Spokane, Washington, to Washington, D.C. In 1916, President Wilson observed the day. President Coolidge signed a resolution in favor of Father's Day. In 1966, Lyndon Johnson signed an executive order that the holiday be celebrated on the third Sunday in June. And in 1972, Congress passed an act making it official that Father's Day was a national holiday. These kisses are from my dad, the fathers of my grandchildren, all 33 of them, the fathers in this room, and all the WCPS dads who father our children well. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Now I can hear when I say, "You are the best dads ever." My friend saying, "There can only be one best April." If you're blessed to know Joy Allen, you'd know she lived up to her name. She spread joy and a love of learning for the four decades she served in Washington County Public Schools. Today, she changed her address to Heavenly One. And since you aren't here, Joy, to tell me that there can't be more than one best dad ever? Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Happy Father's Day.
Thank you, Dr. Zetmyer. I'm going to go next because I want to allow Kevin Buckum the opportunity. As Mr. Pickford noticed, or noted, this is his first and last time on the dais, and so I thought it only appropriate that he have the last word at our meeting this evening. I want to say, Kevin, it's been a pleasure working with you. I wish you all the best. I know you're going to go on to do wonderful things. I'd like to thank all members of all three employee groups who saw us through the most challenging of years. I hope that we never, ever see a year like the one we have just lived through. To Tanish Gupta, who will be joining us as the student member of the Board come July 13th. Your term begins the first, so you'll be up here with us on July 13th. Welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Welcome, and we look forward to working with you. Thank you, colleagues. Thank you all. Kevin, to you.
Thank you so much, colleagues. It's honestly been amazing. I remember just first starting my term online, that board meeting, audio-only. I was so nervous shaking my desk. And then over these past months, there's been a lot of discussions, a lot of struggles, even discussion too. But at the end of the day, we as board members are a family, S.I. Vision. I got to know all of you so well throughout this short year. Honestly, it feels like it just flew by now. And now finally I'm at the dais for the first and last time, but it's honestly been truly amazing. And so I don't want to forget, we can take a photo with this plaque.
That's right.
Yeah. But I do have a few comments, and all of you board members, you've all taught me individual lessons through my discussions with you, through just hearing and seeing the lessons that you taught me, what you've done. And so I just want to share a quick one. Dr. April Zentmeyer, you taught me what it means to be a leader in education and to really embrace your community, but also to take what life leads you. You've been a nurse, you've been a CEO, you've been an educator, administrator, and now a board member. You've done so much. To Mr. Darrell Evans, who can't be here, he was appointed and he's took on his role well and has, he has done a good job doing that. And so he's shown that take what life gives you, and I believe he was in finance, now he's a board member. So any career can lead to being a board member, so that's what he's taught me. Mr. Stauffer, you've taught me to follow your heart, take the road, and see what it leads you down, and that's a very valuable lesson that I'll never forget. Mr. Stauffer, serving as our vice president, you've taught me not to forget your roots, where you come from. Remember who your community is and what you're elected to do. And you've exemplified that through your plot process, through writing letters, through community support, and that's always been shown every decision you've make. You've always relayed back your roots of being an athletic director, teacher, social teacher, everything. That's amazing. Ms. Williams, President Williams, you've led your job as president, your role as president wonderfully. You've taught me how, what it means to lead with excellence and dedication to your role. You're always available, whether it's text, email, anything, and you've helped me immensely to get accustomed to my role and also helped me whenever questions. And you also helped to write that letter of recommendation that got me appointed to the State Board of Education by Governor Hogan, so I cannot thank you enough. Superintendent Dr. Michael, thank you so much for all you've done, answering my questions, emails. You've been a tremendous asset to me in this role, and I cannot thank you enough. You've been a guiding hand to me whenever I had questions, whenever I would see what to do, or just having general discussions and comments on educational policy, facilities, anything. You've always been right there to talk to you. Mr. Pickford, let's go here. You taught me to take opportunities and to have fun while doing it. You're always a center of fun, cheer, cheering, and you always brighten the mood anywhere you go. I really appreciate that. Ms. Linda Murray, thank you so much for all that you've done. Let's see. You taught me how to advocate, especially when you're advocating to the county commissioners, and, and to think beyond yourself, to think about the children, to think about the community members. You always make a point to extend not by yourself, but to talk about your grandkids, to talk about family members, to talk about colleagues you've interacted with, and that's shown through decision-making and also our curriculum meeting yesterday. It was really shown, and it's constantly shown. So thank you all, colleagues, for your amazing work. And I also want to give a special thanks to the board secretary, Ms. Debbie Chekovitch, who's right beside us, always doing her job, typing, writing notes, and being a hand in everything else. And thank you to all the staff out there for all that you've done for me and all you've done for the board. It's truly amazing. And I want to give Tanish all the, all the consideration and all the preparedness in his role. I wish him good luck and Godspeed in this really challenging and oftentimes time-consuming role, but it's so worth it. And I've learned every single one of these lessons from you, board members, staff, and I'll take them all to the State Board of Education, and I will never forget WCPS and all of the lessons it's taught me. So thank you.
Thank you.
You really are going to run for governor, aren't you?
Colleagues, if there's nothing further, we stand adjourned. Thank you.
And we're getting a photo?